... commission. I'm going to read the rules and procedures. The Plan and Zoning Commission is generally an advisory body to the City Council. The City Council will hold a public hearing and make the final decision on all matters before the commission, other than site plans and subdivision plots, unless denials or conditional approvals thereof are appealed. Please contact the city clerk or Development Services Department staff for details on council hearings. Applicant will be given 10 minutes to present the request. Proponents and then opponents from the public are then allowed to speak in that order, with each speaker allowed a maximum of five minutes. Applicant is then allowed five minutes of rebuttal. The hearing will then be closed, and the commission will discuss and vote on the issue. All comments are to be germane to the item under consideration, and speakers are to maintain a courteous manner. Items listed on the consent portion of the agenda will not be individually discussed and will be considered for approval in accordance with the recommendation in the staff report, unless an individual present or member of the commission requests that item be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately under the public hearing agenda. I will now read through the consent public hearing items. The first is a request from Douglas and Sarah Wells for review and approval of the following property in the vicinity of 520 and 530 42nd Street. Determination as to whether the requested rezoning is in conformance with the Plan DSM Comprehensive Plan. Amend the Plan DSM creating our tomorrow comprehensive plan to revise the future land And rezone the property from NX1 Neighborhood Mixed District to RX1 Mixed-Use District. Does anyone in the audience wish to hear this item tonight? Anyone on the commission? This will remain on consent. I was informed that item number three may also be moved to consent, and the city staff will make a brief description of why.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the commission, Bert Drost, Planning Staff for the City of Des Moines. Item number three is a request to amend the East Gate PUD in order to allow a drive-through restaurant to be built along East Euclid Avenue. The staff has recommended 14 conditions. The applicant has agreed to all of them. I did want to point out that we've clarified condition number 11 today. We just added this text highlighted in yellow. It basically says that all utilities shall be buried wherever reasonably practicable in accordance with Chapter 135. So, since it's a PUD, Chapter 135 technically would not apply. The PUD conceptual plan would set the zoning for the property. So, we wanted it to match what's in Chapter 135, so we did add the caveat that the utilities shall be buried whenever reasonably practicable. So, anyway, the applicant agrees to our conditions, so staff's comfortable moving number three to the consent agenda.
Does anyone in the audience wish to hear this item tonight? Anyone on the commission? I do need a motion to move this on to consent.
I'll move.
Oh, Jan Fried, thank you. And I also need a motion. So, items on public consent tonight are one and three. Do we have a motion?
We do need to vote on the motion to move it.
Oh. This is my first time doing this in person, so forgive me.
No worries.
Tyler?
So, everybody in favor of the motion, you raise your right hand. Say aye. Anybody opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. And then we need another motion to move one and three as approved.
I'll move approval.
And then we will do another hand vote. All in favor, say aye, or raise your right hand. Any opposed? Okay.
And then we did have one other change to the agenda. Item number two is a request at 4028 East 14th Street. They have requested another continuance to the September 16th commission meeting. This was continued from the last meeting so that they had time to get Mid-American estimates, and at this time they've requested another continuance because they still haven't received those Mid-American energy estimates yet. So, staff is supportive of moving number two, or making a motion to move number two to the September 16th meeting.
Okay. Do I have a motion to move item number two to the September 16th meeting?
Move to continue.
All right, all in favor, raise your right hand. Any opposed? All right.
And then before we start on number four, did you want to approve the minutes from the last meeting?
That'd be a great idea, Bert, thank you. So, we have the minutes from the last meeting. We need a motion to approve those minutes. Thank you, Kayla. All in favor, raise your right hand. Any opposed? Abstentions?
Abstentions.
Thank you.
[inaudible]
And Carolyn.
Yep. All right, we will move on to the public hearing items. The first public hearing item is item number four. It's a request from Nancy Henderson for review and approval of a public site hearing plan and type-two design alternative in accordance with City Code Section 135 924B and 135 931B for a property at 4200 Foster Drive to allow construction of a detached garage on the side yard. The garage is set back 45 feet from the corner along the street, while the existing house is set back 68. And Kyle's going to present this item for us.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the commission. Kyle Larson, member of City Planning Staff. As you mentioned, this is a detached garage that is seeking type-two design alternative for the setback to the corner lot line. The subject property is located at the corner of 42nd and Foster Drive on the southwest corner, and see here on the map. There are some photographs from the site visit that was done earlier this week. This is the residence on the left side, has a driveway leading up to an existing single detached car, single-car detached garage to the back of the property there. They would like to place the new detached garage in this kind of lawn area that you see here. Here's a different perspective of the subject property looking to the west. This is Foster Drive just on the right here. And yet another photograph to the west. Again, the location of the detached garage would be somewhere in this vicinity. And then there's a couple of street photos that you can kind of get a little perspective on the surrounding neighborhood context. This is a view to the east along Foster Drive. This is a view to the west along Foster Drive. Here's the site plan provided by the applicant. In the description, it was noted that the setback to the side yard was 45 feet. However, I would like to note a correction to that dimension. It is actually 57 feet 10 inches. It is a little bit hard to pick up, but if you can see the hand cursor here, this black box is the location of the proposed detached garage. And again, the code does not allow the garage to be placed between the principal dwelling and the lot line. So, that is the type-two design alternative that they're seeking tonight. As you can see, the principal dwelling is here. The existing detached garage is tucked back in the corner here. So, the new garage would tie into the existing driveway here. And then they are noting that there's a 10-foot clearance between the existing home and the new proposed garage. Here are some elevations provided by the applicant of the proposed detached garage. To give you a little bit more context on the neighborhood and the streets surrounding the subject property, here's a little bit zoomed-out map that shows you the building footprints around the subject property. Here's the subject property on the southwest corner of 42nd and Foster Drive. The red box is the approximate location of the proposed garage. I just wanted to show this to give you an idea of how that proposed garage would kind of orient itself within the larger neighborhood context. If you're familiar with this area, the houses do have a fairly substantial setback, a front yard setback, as you can see here, as they loop around Foster Drive. I did an average of the front yard setback along the south side of Foster Drive, and that averaged front yard setback was 91 feet. You received a staff recommendation and report in your packet. I'm not going to read through this, but just scan a few things here. As I mentioned, they're seeking the type-two design alternative for the setback of the detached garage. Staff is recommending denial of this request. We feel that it is out of character for the neighborhood. However, we do recognize that there are some site constraints that the applicant is running into, and so we are seeking your discussion and deliberation tonight on that matter. I'd be happy to open it up to any questions at this time.
Is there a typo on page five of the staff rationale? It mentions an attached garage in the first sentence. Is there a desire for an attached garage, and they're proposing a detached? Or is there a difference between attached and detached here that's being missed?
Code requirements would be different for an attached garage, slightly different. That is obviously not something that we have reviewed for, because it's not a plan that has been presented to us at this time. We've just reviewed the detached garage option that was presented to us and found that it didn't conform with that setback, because it is placed between the principal dwelling and the corner lot line.
So, if it was attached, would this be a problem still?
I think that, if you allow me to scroll back to the site plan here, I think there could be a few different challenges with that, depending on the placement of the attached garage. This is obviously all speculative. But the code would define the front yard for this property actually as the 42nd Street frontage. The code defines the front yard as a shorter street segment on a corner lot. So, I believe the street frontage along 42nd Street is somewhere around 128 feet, and it's somewhere around 140 or 142 feet of frontage along Foster Drive. So, even though this property has a Foster Drive address, the code would define the front yard as 42nd Street. So, then you would be left with figuring out the rear yard setback to the west here for a detached garage. In order to be in compliance, they would not be able to, I guess, extend beyond the existing rear corner of the house. If they were to extend any attached addition to the west, they would need additional relief, and it would likely have to come back to PNC.
Okay, I'm sorry, I don't mean to be slow. So, when you're calculating the setback from the primary road, are you saying that we should be calculating it from 42nd Street on the east or from Foster Drive?
So, there would be a setback to each of the four property lines. There would be a setback dimension for each of them.
Wait, so is the frontage road in this 42nd or Foster Drive?
So, 42nd, the dimension from the east side of the home to 42nd Street would be considered the front yard setback. The dimension from the west side of the home to the west property line would be considered the rear yard setback, if we're talking about an attached addition.
Is there anywhere on this lot where detached garage would be allowed?
By code? There is an existing detached garage that would technically be behind the home in the rear yard existing that's going to remain. That would be, if that weren't there, that would be obviously the logical place to put a garage, but there's already one there. That would be allowed by code.
I have a question. I don't know.
Not yet.
Okay. Because I have to go there. I think I have to.
I know she didn't officially ask that question, but I have that question too, because it seems like when you're looking at this, the distance between that garage, if you tear it down, are you able to put up a new garage exactly where it was, even if it's not in the right, it won't fit anymore?
The code would require the detached garage to be five feet off of the property line. We could grant a type-one design alternative for it to be placed three and a half feet off of the property line. If it were any closer than three and a half feet to the property line, the applicant would need to seek a type-two design alternative to place it closer to the property line than that. I do not know offhand how close that existing garage is off the property line. But like I said, it is a single-car garage. So, as long as you're placing it with a relatively similar-sized garage, I think you could conceivably meet the code requirements on placing it back there.
Again, I apologize for being new and so not understanding all these, because when I read it, I thought my understanding was one of the first major issues of why this can't work is because we're placing a garage in front of the primary structure with respect to the front, with respect to the frontage road.
Correct.
That's why I thought Foster Drive was a frontage road. But if 42nd Street is a frontage road, are we actually not, we're actually behind the house?
No. The code does not allow you, regardless of what's considered your front, your primary front yard versus your side street, the code does not allow you to have the garage in between the primary building and the street, regardless if it's considered the second, you know, the side street or your frontage. So, I think where Kyle, where he was going with talking about 42nd Street was really under the questions of what, how would an attached garage work? But at the end of the day, they're proposing a garage between the house and the street, which the code doesn't allow. The whole, what's your front door face, where your address is, that's moot to the question.
Okay, so the real question comes down to whether or not a usable garage can fit behind it where the current one is, where that part hasn't been, isn't clear yet? Is that right? Because if you put distance between that garage, can you fit? Wait, sorry, I'll wait for the other pieces, begus. So, you're saying the only place it could possibly go is in that back corner? The question now comes to whether or not that back corner is large enough to put anything in with the offsets?
No, that's not what's being proposed. The garage is staying. The garage that's existing is staying. They're looking to add a second garage in this location right here, which, like Jason said, is between the principal dwelling and the lot line. Because this is a corner lot, it obviously has two street frontages, so the garage could not be placed anywhere north of the house or east of the house according to the code requirement.
If they tore that down, does that change anything that you just said?
It does not.
Okay.
I feel like what you're getting at, though, is like, they clearly want more space, right? Because they don't have a single-car garage right now. And so, there's no way for them to build a bigger garage right now, anywhere. Is that right?
Well, I don't know that that's correct. I don't think we have.
Rep, we're trying to do a design during the public hearing. Why don't we, you know, listen to the whole, what the applicant has to say, what people object to, and then do this discussion at the proper time?
Yes, thank you, Will.
Yeah, staff, staff does not disagree that there aren't site constraints here that the applicant is dealing with, but it's our opinion that the location of the garage is out of character for the rest of the neighborhood, which is why we're recommending denial.
Kyle, I have a question. From the neighborhood notices, did you receive any responses as far as objections?
I did not receive any responses either way. I had a couple of requests for the staff recommendation from neighbors, but they didn't weigh in either way if they were supportive or not supportive. Any other questions?
Thanks, Kyle. Okay, the applicant can present now. You can come up. Please state your name and your address, and you have 10 minutes.
Okay, so I am Nancy Henderson. I guess you guys can still see this lot. And if you look at the garage that's on there, it's kind of hard to see, but it's parked next to my gray pickup truck. Over this way? Oh, you're gone. I'm so sorry. Right, all right, so this is my yard, and that is the garage in the back. That garage is currently nine foot wide and 20 foot wide on the outside. On the inside, it is about 18 foot wide, because there's the joists and there's some filling, whatever. My truck does not fit in, nor does my, the Malibu. So, neither of the cars in the family fit into this garage. If we were to take the existing garage down, which was proposed, it would have to be even more narrow, in which case, no car. Well, you know, it's, it's right now too wide by code. So, if I remove this, couldn't go. If you look at that small area in the backyard, and you consider the setbacks from the two fences, and my home, attached or not, no garage can fit back there that fits any car. So, additionally, oddly enough, the back of my yard, which is what we're calling the front of my yard, which is what you saw in those pictures, you saw my back door. The prettier part of my yard is the part facing 42nd and the part that's gone. I suspect at one time the house below me in that picture wasn't there, and that was probably, that was probably originally, that's the front of my house. My front door, my porch, the beautiful columns are all in the back of my house, if you consider 42nd Street my street address. We've considered putting the garage anywhere else, but it would require another drive on 42nd, and it would be nowhere near the home, or it would be in front of a pretty part of the home. The back-facing part of my house, it does not have windows, and, you know, is towards 42nd. So, I got some stuff y'all can have. All of the houses around signed a paper saying they think it will increase not only the value of their house, but the aesthetics of the neighborhood. Oh, Jesus, okay, sorry. I've never done anything like this before. Forgive me. Okay. So, they all signed a letter saying that, he's going to try to think for, focus that for me. Not very well focused, but it would be 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10. It would be the 10 surrounding houses that can see it. So, it would be, if it was going to cause any trouble visually, these people, they all say, please let me have my garage. We all believe that it has reduced my, our value. My house sold, it was on the market for three years, I bought it for 150,000 less than asking. The house directly next door to me that we shared the driveway that you saw on the original picture also very much would like to have this fixed. The other thing that it would fix is that our two driveways are not the same grades. When we put this driveway on, it will be about, the yard will be sunken to make it happen, and our neighbors have to have a retaining wall on both sides of their driveway that's shared, and they can't get their car in in the winter, because it's tight. So, fixing the grade, fixing the driveway, fixing the shared driveway is very desired. She says she's more than happy for you guys to call her. She wanted to come. She's an ER doctor, and she's on call. But she said that we could text or call her if you needed any verification. She's amongst the signed people, who all said they think it is valuable and pretty and wanted. Next, I also would like to say that I took pictures of six properties, if you follow that block that he had done. So, if you follow along this, this block that way, be more the original picture, that original picture where you can see the circle that I live on. And there are six houses in my neighborhood that have something that's either attached, detached, or a car part, almost all closer to the 42nd Street, and also in front of their home. Pictures of all of those. And then additionally, if you went back to that circle, there's two houses when you go into Fosters that he had. And when you went into Foster Drive, my house, as you went around the circle and as you came out, which I guess would be, nobody eats soggy waffles never north, down Foster as that circles around, we both have these pillars with a light on it to say, welcome to Linden Heights. And their driveway is a mirror image, their yard is a mirror image of my yard, and they have the exact same garage formation that was approved for them, in the same lot. And theirs is a three-car garage, and it's closer to the road. So, I think that it is not out of character. I don't think that it's going to change the value of anybody's home. I think everybody around it wants it. I have racked my mind to come up with any way to get a garage on this property, other than this. I don't care if it's attached or detached. I would really like it to be on the ugly side of my house, not the front of my house. And I don't want it to detect, to take away from my neighbors' houses by putting it somewhere that would be unsightly. So, I'm hoping I could please, please have a garage so that my car can fit in it. Also, I own a car, a stock-in car, a boat, and we have two motorcycles and two dirt bikes and a whole bunch of kid bicycles and a lawnmower. So, we have a lot of things that nobody wants to see outside. And also, please keep in mind that that garage is there, does have a garage door and a roof, but cars don't fit in it. It's a very small, it's more of a glorified shed. So, I don't know. But you're welcome to all of my, any, do I say thank you at this point?
If you're done, you can just take a seat.
Okay, do you guys have any questions?
Oh, sorry.
Does anybody have any questions?
Yeah.
Yes.
Correct me if I'm wrong, I thought I heard that you said you had a signed paper.
From my neighbors?
Yes.
Many. Yeah, all, every house in the neighborhood, I signed it. And not only did they sign it, but they also, if you look at the top, it clearly states that they think it will add value to their property, because my house has brought it all down. They can't sell it because it doesn't have a garage, and in today's life, no one buys a house that has no usable garage, except for a single mother who's a teacher, they do. And also that they believe it will add, so they think it's going to add value in aesthetics. And they'd also like for me and my neighbor to have a nicer-looking driveway, because our driveway is, it's awry. And you can see that in some of the pictures he presented. One driveway's up higher, the other's lower, and it involves two big retaining walls, and it's all cracked up. It would, and we've been waiting, me and the neighbor, on fixing our driveway until we can find out about this, because we're hoping to do it all as, you know, all together at once, and lower the amount of construction.
I have a follow-up question. When staff presented, they discussed the house to, adjacent to you, saying that the view shed from the house would be impaired by the garage. Did the owner of that house sign this, this paper?
She did. We're actually, she's part of the project. We designed it together, we're working together, because we're going to get both of our driveways repaired at the same time. She's the one whose driveway gets stuck between two retaining walls. So, what happens is when you drive up, and you can kind of see it, I can see it, you can't, but on this picture here, when a car drives into her driveway, because there's that retaining wall, no one else, so if she ever has guests, they all have to park along the road, or else they block her in. And when it's snowy out, they get stuck. They, their car gets diagonal, and it also is causing them water damage, because there's two retaining walls. So, they, they want it, I want it. Also, if you look at where their yard is, which is, yeah, it's kind of hard to see on that photo. Oh, the thing moves along. So, if you look at, so if you kind of look at this photo, their house is set back anyhow, you can't, they don't see anything really past my house. And if you can see where those tree lines, that tree line goes, those pine trees, that's about where, oh, I took this, this photo since I put, see those mums? That's where the corner would be. I put those out there as a thing. This is my photo. So, as you can see, it's already got trees out to that. as a thing. This is my photo. So as you can see, it's already got trees out to that same point. Those mums is where the garage would come out to. So their view's already, already obstructed. So it would obstruct it no more. And if you were to look through any of their windows, it looks, if I look out, so that rear-facing windows that you see there, that's my bedroom. Behind it is my kitchen. And their farthest window's facing 42nd Street. If I wave out, my kitchen is where they see me. So their house lines up dead in the middle of my house, if you, you know, look window to window. So they're setback behind the house already. And that house, the house next to it, the three houses across the street, the house behind me, and the three houses across, and then the others are parked, all would like to have the garage. We all think it will add value. And they did sign the paper with their phone numbers. And so I would love to have a garage. You can also see that that driveway doesn't look great. That's not in character with the neighborhood either. So.
Just have a quick question. Can we go back to the design of the garage?
Uh, which button do I hit?
Thanks, Bert.
Yes. And I have, there was two different designs that we talked about. We talked about doing it like this. We also talked about making it flat, so you could do like a patio on the top. And I'm happy with either design. There's about a $8,000 difference in it, as long as you're two-car.
Okay. Can, can you explain, I'm not exactly clear because of how the house is oriented on the lot, what part of the garage is going to be
Visible?
Towards Foster Drive, yes.
So if I wanted to go the other way, which maybe I should watch better. Show the house, and I can kind of show them. All right, the one where you can see, keep going. This one. All right. So do you see the direction? My house sits sideways on the lot. This is the back, this is what's visually the back of the house, but what is, you know, the front. And so it would sit in front of those two windows. And because it'll have to be, you see I was on a hill, they'll have to grade it for it. So it'll probably come up as high at the highest peak as that white line on the garage. And it would go over to about halfway as wide of the house. If you see where the house kind of sets back and comes over from what I would call my three-season room, the back patio, it'll go about halfway that wide. There is another mum down there. If you look kind of under the tree, there's another mum marking it. Those are my flags for you.
And so the door of the garage would be
Be coming forward.
What's facing.
Yep. And so that driveway would be cut in, right straight into there, and you would go into that way. So you would go into the doors like you're going, like as if my three-season screen was a door, that way. Mm-hmm. Yep.
Sorry if you already said this. Are you keeping the other garage too, if you do build this one?
I, I will keep it, mostly because I don't want to take it down. I don't mind to take it down, but if I take it down, nothing else can go there. Do you see, it literally sits on the lot line, and it's a nine-foot-wide garage. So if I took that off and tried to rebuild something better at this point, it's only going to be a six-foot garage. So there's, you know, my thoughts with it are that eventually I might make it into just my yard. Just get rid of it. But I haven't decided what to do. That's my next, you know, that would be phase B. I don't know what to do with that. It's not attractive. I'd like it to go. To make this garage is already about, just to make the most cheapest garage on this because of the amount of leveling and concrete that's needed, there, my contractor says it's going to be a $60,000, $80,000 garage. To make it nice enough to look like this house, and to have it belong there, he said it'd be about another five or 10, if I want to make it flat on the top. I don't know. Can you see my neighbor's garage over there? There's this flat on the top, and you can go on there and like grill, which I probably would want to do, depending on, you know. But I went with the most basic garage for this that I could find, which is that. So that is your cheapest, most basic garage, and you can only go up from there if I wanted. I figured I'd see if I could get the easiest one, said yes, before I went any further.
Are there any other questions?
Can I clarify one thing you said earlier? So, because when going by here, I guess what you're saying is that the house is built so it actually faces, in the traditional facing, actually southeast, isn't it?
Yeah.
So this is, this is actually the original back of the house?
This is the back of the house. Yeah. I sent him some pictures of the front, so you can see it. It has really beautiful, in character with the neighborhood, on the other side of the house. It has big, beautiful columns. It has a huge wraparound porch. It has a front door, stairs, the whole nine yards. Pretty windows, French doors. This has an empty wall, a back porch, and my bedroom. So this is most definitely the visual back of the yard.
And the garage will basically just look like the empty walls, same design, just, it'll just look like an extension of the back of the house, won't it, if I'm understanding the pictures right?
It would look like an extension. Exactly. It's going to fit right in that hole. Yep. Yep. And I went for the smallest one, which is two. So, and that would, again, also, like, I could get my, I have a boat, I have a truck. You know, our stuff does not fit in this, this car. And, you know, it's a nice thing that we have, but it's not a garage that is functional. A car doesn't fit in it. It has an eight-foot door, so you can get in the door, but it's, the length of it is about two feet short from my pickup truck. When I put it in, not only does the bumper stick out, but so does a good chunk of the bed of it. And our car does the same. Our car gets right into the bumper, but the bump, the door won't shut, and the bumper sticks out. So neither of our vehicles can fit in. It's a shared driveway. Also, the parking in front of this house, you can't park on any of the corners of the house. And so at that neighbor's house, everybody tries to park there. So there's also some parking congestion out there, caused mostly by me and my neighbor's yards, because none of us can park in our own driveways.
I think we're timed.
We have limited.
Time. Yeah, sorry.
Would you, like your?
You need to leave that for the record, please. Thank you.
Oh, I also brought my ordinances from the homeowners association.
You can
So that you guys can have those.
Just leave it on the stack. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any speakers in the audience in support of this item? Any against the item? Neutral? Does anyone have any questions for staff at this point?
Yes, I have a question. I realize that the staff has recommended denial of this design alternative, but if, if the commission decided to approve the design alternative, would there be additional, any additional recommendations or requests from staff on the design of the garage itself, as far as how it looks according to the house and the neighborhood? Or is, I mean, I don't know if that all checked out?
It really just comes down to the exterior materials matching what's existing on the house.
Kyle, could you go back to the building elevations?
Yeah.
I do think that in cases where we've had garages going facing a street, that, you know, in a place where the garage doesn't, you know, belong in the sense of the code, that we've asked for like windows in the overhead door, that sort of thing, maybe a vent element in the gable. Those would be kind of some suggestions that we might offer for you. And I also want to point out that when Kyle did start his presentation, he did say that we recognize there's constraints here, and that we're also looking for the commission's input and thoughts on this. So this, you know, wasn't intended to be a, you know, drawn-out debate or argument. We're just looking for your guys' input. So those would be my thoughts on it. Thank you.
Oh, I do have a question. So what the applicant said kind of disagreed with what you said in terms of, or at least I understood, the pictures you were showing of all the houses that you were saying that they have, they're closer to the street, or I wasn't sure exactly. Are you in agreement? It just sounded like she was saying something that was not congruent with what you said about what's typical in the neighborhood.
I was primarily, primarily looking at Foster Drive hitting west, so kind of that immediate block that she's on. I think she may have cast a wider net than I did.
Okay.
Which is perfectly fine.
If there are no other questions, I'm going to close the public hearing. And commissioners, any thoughts here?
Well, I'll, I'll just offer that that is, this is kind of my neighborhood, and I was familiar with like four of those names, four or five of the names that you shared. And one good friend of mine lives right across the street. So if they're in favor of it, I know these people, and I, so anyway.
Are you making a motion?
Okay. I will recommend approval. Or wait, deny staff.
Yeah, so it's a motion to approve the request of type II design alternative and public hearing site plan.
May I ask a question, Jan? Does that include the, the design review by the plan administrator? They were talking about various options for the design of the door and so forth.
We can, we can add that.
Yeah, what Jason The, what Jason offered, is that?
Sorry.
What Jason offered.
Windows in the overhead door and a vent element of some, to the satisfaction of staff.
Yes.
Yeah, just making sure that the materials are congruent with the, the house and the neighborhood.
And Jan, you accepted that, right?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. I'm sorry for, just to clarify. So what we're saying here is, we're basically saying we are wanting to approve the type II design alternative, which is the location. So we were cool with the location, as long as it conforms with the building and everything else. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
Subject to the, the conditions of having windows in the overhead door, a vent element and a gable, and materials that are compatible with the district, or the neighborhood to the satisfaction of the planning administrator.
Are those extra things we're adding? Are those things that are already, would it be expected of it?
Those are actually things that are being added. The, the windows would not be typically be required, but of a garage, but a garage would normally be behind the building in a backyard. And so the commission, the motion is to, as a trade-off for the approval, they're asking, the, the motion, Jan is asking for those as a trade-off to minimize the impact of the relief.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions about the motion? All in favor of Jan's motion, please raise your right hand. Anyone opposed to the motion? Any abstentions? Thank you. Moving on to item number five, request from visiting nurses services of Iowa, Every Step, represented by Lynn Michael, for review and approval of a public site hearing, pan Kavanaugh House Building addition and deck expansion for the following type II design alternative in accordance with city code for property located at 956th Street to allow site improvements for a general building occupied by an assisted living facility, A through C.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, Bert Ross, planning staff for the City of Des Moines. The site plan before you would allow for modifications to the existing hospice facility at 956th Street. The subject property is located just to the north of the freeway at 56th Street, directly across from the Waveland Golf Course. They recently had a site plan approved that would allow for some additions and some site modifications to the property. That site plan, just a second. That site plan that was approved showed the trees and sidewalk along 56th Street, and it also allowed for the burial of utilities. However, they're now, they've since submitted an amendment to the site plan that was approved to request waiver of the street trees along 56th, to request waiver of the sidewalk along 56th, and to request waiver of the utility burial. So again, the site plan that's up here now is what was approved, and this sheet I'm about to show you is the proposed changes. So you'll be able to see that they're no longer proposing the sidewalk. Sorry, it's jumping around here. They're no longer proposing the sidewalk or the street trees. Staff would point out that we've administratively granted waiver of the portion of the sidewalk that is to the north of the driveway. However, we feel that it's reasonable to require them to provide that drive, or the sidewalk that's to the south of the driveway. If you remember from the aerial photo, which
Go into the number part, Bert.
Yeah, here.
I think.
It's being weird. Yeah, so if you see from the aerial, there's an existing sidewalk along the west side of 56th Street here, and then the sidewalk, or the trail jumps 56th Street here and goes along the golf course. So we feel it's reasonable to have them put a sidewalk from that driveway to this sidewalk, so that people who are either here at the time, or visitors of, residents at the hospice, could have access to the city's trail system. Because if you go south of the freeway, there's a trail that snakes down to Walnut Creek. So we do feel that it would be an amenity to this use to have access to the sidewalks. And I'd also point out, as far as the trees go, they are removing trees for the proposed addition, so they're required to do, provide 11 trees to offset the, or to meet the tree mitigation requirements. And with the street trees that they're asking to waive, they could provide eight or nine of those trees right there. So we feel that it's reasonable to have them put in the street trees, so it offsets what's being removed for the addition. And then as far as the utilities goes, the estimate that they provided from Mid-American shows that it would cost $14,000, and $14,103 to bury the utilities. The applicants also indicated that their overall project budget is 2.8 million, which means that this utility burial is less than, or right at a half of 1% of the overall cost. So, so I guess, based on that percentage, staff has recommended denial of the waiver of undergrounding utilities. We did not receive any comment cards back. Any questions for me?
How far north were you requiring the sidewalk to go? So you're saying that in that picture, are you expecting the sidewalk to go all the way to the driveway, or all the way to, which would be reasonable for someone who is visiting from the trail system to cut over towards the door, or the, or the facility?
No, we just said from the driveway. So.
Okay, so sidewalk, so if we're saying we want those who are visiting from the trail system to connect into here, we'd be asking for the sidewalk to go all the way to the driveway, so past the front door?
Right. I, I have some photos here that kind of show there's some
So Bert, there's no sidewalk north of that, right? At all? All the way to university?
Right.
And that's the part that staff has waived. What we're saying is public sidewalk and the public right-of-way needs to be provided from their driveway to the south.
Yeah. Yeah, so if the applicant was able to provide a sidewalk, say, from the front door to the existing sidewalk at the bridge, staff may be able to get on board with that. But if you look, there's a slight, slight swale right here. So I could let the applicant's engineer answer that, but I believe the best route for the sidewalk is along the street to the driveway.
So Bert, just to be clear, there is a sidewalk over the bridge, on the west side of the bridge?
There's a sidewalk on the west side of 56th at the bridge, yeah. Yeah, that is the trail that comes up from Walnut Creek.
Yeah, and then, Will, everyone hops across there to get on the trail on the other side.
Yeah.
The trail connection's on the other side.
Bert, are the utilities buried? Other neighbors?
Um, no. I, there's aerial along the roadway.
Are the only unburied utilities, the one light pole? Are the only unburied utilities, the one light pole that's at the north corner of it, what other utilities are to be buried?
I believe it's just the overhead electrical. Oops.
So it'd be the, yeah, the service line to that light.
But north of there, Bert, there are no buried utility lines, correct?
I don't believe so.
In the residential areas, there's no buried utilities up there?
I don't believe so.
Are there any other questions? Oh, Todd?
I'm a little concerned with the sidewalk. Has engineering said anything about, I think if we extend it to the driveway, you're going to get people using the trail that don't realize they're going, they have to cross over to the east side where, at the light. So you're going to end up with a more hazardous situation of people getting to that, right where that manhole is, or that intake, realizing, oh, I gotta go back, I'm just going to cross here. And if you've ever driven down the street at this location, people are trying to get through that light and they're going pretty fast.
Yeah. I would guess right now that's what people have to do without this sidewalk here. If they do want to go for a walk, they have to jump the street right now. So maybe by providing a sidewalk here that gives them an option to not...
I don't, I'm more concerned about the trail users, the bicyclists, the people using the trail.
I see what you're saying.
I'd like, I'd like some judgment from engineering to say, are we creating a more hazardous situation than currently exists?
Right. Yeah, I believe the trail is probably eight feet wide, where the sidewalk would only have to be five feet wide, so it might be some visual...
Just, Bert, could you confirm that, so the approved site plan showed the sidewalk?
Yeah, it did.
So the approved site plan would have been approved or reviewed by engineering department? So they've already signed off on a complete sidewalk being provided here?
Okay.
Todd makes a valid point, though. I drive the street all day, every day, and it's high density trail, right? So there are going to be a lot of people to get caught up, not knowing that they can't go north past the hospice and then make a decision to hop a very busy road.
If there's signage or something that could be placed there?
That's a valid point.
It's just a...
I think we're creating it more dangerous.
Did engineering consider the operational challenge that Todd's identifying, which is that yes, people are going to naturally keep going along that when they aren't actually going to hospice and they're instead not going, because when you say engineering looked at it, we're good, did engineering consider that operational issue he's talking about? Is that a valid answer?
I, I couldn't tell you if they were specifically asked that question. I would assume that when they review a site plan, they look at all, all impacts of a proposal and make a decision based off of, you know, good engineering principles. I trust that if this has gone through their staff, they've looked at it, they've evaluated the impacts, they know what the system is around it, that they would have accounted for that.
Yeah, and I'm guessing there's existing signs there now that say trail this way, directing people to cross 56th?
I think you have a photo where you're standing at the end of the bridge, looking north.
Bert, if, if that's one of the concerns, could we just recommend to add a sign there?
Yeah.
To parks and rec?
Yeah.
Could you pull up the photo one more time of the, where the sidewalk would be?
Sure.
Because, did you say there's no sidewalk on the other side of it already?
On the other side of 56th or the other side of the driveway?
Like, if you kept going to, on, what would that be? If you kept going north, there's no sidewalk there either. So it's not like someone would be coming south and try to hit the sidewalk from the south anyway.
Right.
Okay. Are there any further questions? All right, the applicant can now present. Please state your name and address. You all have 10 minutes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Lynn Michael. I'm the chief financial officer for Every Step. Did you say I need my address as well? One, my home address is 14021 Ridgemont Drive in Urbandale. Thank you commissioners and staff for the opportunity to talk about this tonight. All three of these items that we have, we are requesting their removal. Let's start with the, with the sidewalk, since we've been talking about that. I, we completely agree that a sidewalk along this route right here would only be used by confused cyclists who are trying to navigate this trail to the north. I'm an avid bike rider, I've been on this trail many times. There's no signage there now, but it's natural that, you know, you have to turn to cross 56th Street to pick up the trail on the golf course because that's the only alternative. If we put us a sidewalk here, even with a sign, you're going to get, you're going to get people, cyclists ending up at a dead end here. And remember, this is a hospice house. You're not going to have any residents that are going to be even ambulatory, you're not going to have any visitors that use this sidewalk if we place it here. The only use of the sidewalk would be for people who are confused that they're thinking they're going along the trail system to the north and then would end up at a dead end. So we, we really would appreciate a waiver of, of that sidewalk. Regarding the utility line, this, this pole right here, thank you, I can't remember who pointed it out, but this, in this neighborhood, all of the utility lines have overhead power. It's residential to the north, there's no underground power there at all, so this would be out of character with the rest of the neighborhood. We are a not-for-profit. This is, you're right, it's only half of 1% of the cost of our project, but we're not-for-profit and, and let me tell you, as chief financial officer, we're watching every single penny on this project and if it doesn't add value, we're not doing it. And honestly, this, this adds no value at all to the project. It does not have any negative character impacts with the neighborhood and we would really appreciate a waiver of that. Regarding the trees, so it's, I, I'm sure most of you are familiar with this corner, beautiful golf course on the east. Here's our building. Can you see our building? You can't see our building. You know why? There's trees everywhere. It's, this is our hospice house. The reason that this, this house is so popular is it's, it's in the middle of a forest in the middle of town. And there are dozens and dozens of volunteer elms and locust trees that sprout up on our property every single year. We did have to take out a few trees to expand our deck so our residents could enjoy the, the beautiful forest there. But honestly, it's, it's not like there's any need to replant any trees. We're, the, the building, you can't even see from the street, you can't see it from the neighbors to the back. I didn't, before I started with the company, I had no idea that there was a hospice house even there. And I played golf across the street all the time. So we believe the need for trees on this particular, replacement trees on this particular property is, is just completely redundant. So we're, we're respectfully requesting the waiver of all three of these items from the site plan. And I would welcome any questions if anyone else.
Any questions?
Yes.
Could you put up the, the site plan again? I have a question about the landscaping. Bert, could you do that for me, please?
This, this one?
Whichever shows the trees that we're discussing. And if you would point out, or would Bert point out, where the stand would go?
Is this 56th Street right here?
Yeah, that's 56th. So the street trees would be right here.
Yeah, this would be, so the interstate is here, the golf course is over here. These are the trees along our side of the property and staff is recommending additional trees here. In the photo that I had up earlier, it would be intermixed with, with those trees.
What's confusing with this drawing, I believe this is the actual approved plan, correct? The, it is showing the street trees that are requested to be waived, so I don't want the commission to be confused. If street trees are provided, it would match what you see on this image.
As opposed to... So it's going to be, yeah.
So do the street trees go along 56th then?
Yeah, that's the proposal.
So this, okay.
And, and a sidewalk is the proposal too. There's not a lot of, there's really not a lot of room here for, for additional trees. There's, the entire property is surrounded by trees. Our building sits in the middle of a forest.
What's the cost of putting in the street trees or those, how, how does that work? I guess, because doesn't the city provide trees all over the place, or I don't understand?
The cost that we've been quoted to put the trees is a little over 4,000, between $4,000 and $5,000, Doug, is that right? Thank you.
What was that again, please?
About between $4,000 and $5,000.
Any further questions?
Thank you very much for your consideration, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Do we have any speakers in the audience in support of this item? Any speakers in opposition? Speakers neutral? Do any commissioners have any questions for staff? All right, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask commissioners for their thoughts
I'll take a swing at it, Emily. So I live across the street at the golf course every day and everything the applicant said is very accurate. And it is a wonderful place. I've had experiences there, unfortunately and fortunately, and it's a great institution. You know, I want to support this expansion and I think burying the power lines is an undue cost when there's no buried power lines around. I, I just agree 100% that a sidewalk going to their drive creates confusion. And, you know, I see the traffic there every day and it's, you know, it's, it's needs to cross there and not cross in a different part. So I would be willing to make a motion to accept all the waivers and put that on the table and see where everyone's at.
Rocky, would you consider a friendly amendment?
Yeah.
How about the trees? Can we have, can we have, can we commit to the trees?
I have experience being there. Carolyn, there are trees everywhere, right, on the golf course and there, so trees just aren't a big deal for me. I love trees, I think, being in this situation.
Friendly amendment to waive the trees and the overhead utilities, but not the sidewalk?
I, I would say no, just because I do, living over there every day, I have great concern about that sidewalk. I, I just see it bringing people across 56th Street in an unnecessary way.
Well?
The comment about the, the golf course is moot, in my opinion, because the main view that most of the public see of this property is when they come off the exit at 56th Street and look at this property directly head on. And right now, it's green and, and many people, most people know what's there, but it seems to me that some kind of landscape design with trees would substantially improve the look of the property and therefore improve the value of the institution. I agree with the sidewalk being problematical, but I think that the trees are an important element.
To throw in another alternative, I agree, I agree strongly that the sidewalk doesn't seem to make sense because it is confusing. I also bike down here. If you're biking on 56th, that's dangerous and uncomfortable and there is no signage, I agree with you, to cross the street on that either. So I don't understand the point of the sidewalk all the way to the driveway. I guess I could see a side, or something that goes from the edge of the bridge directly to the door, maybe, if it's not unreasonably costly. The overhead power lines, although, based on discussions before, it seems like a reasonable cost. And it also seems like the only thing that that power line is doing is risking that thing coming down in a storm and having to be fixed later. It seems like it's not expensive, I guess, I don't understand, we just have like one pole supplying power over to one light on the other side. It seems like leaving that there, it seems, being opposed to undergrounding that or having some other solution that doesn't have that there would make sense. So I guess, I'm not necessarily in favor of waiving the utilities. I am in favor of waiving the sidewalk piece. And as someone who has come off 56th a lot, I'm also in, reasonably in favor of waiving the tree requirements unless there is some other interest in the trees that I'm not understanding. Because if it's visual, that seems like a hard argument to me. If there's some other objective the city wants out of the trees, and a number of trees, I guess I'd want to know more.
Yeah, and Chris, I don't disagree about the power lines. My problem is I think the medium should pay to have the power lines buried, not the actual applicant. And that's just fundamentally how I believe about power lines.
Well, I guess I'll share one more comment since we're all sharing. I disagree to the waiver of the sidewalk primarily because it's not going to be the same width as the trail, one, and two, we're basically undermining bicyclist intelligence by saying they will go all the way down to the driveway when they notice that there's a change in the width of the trail and the sidewalk. And the second point I wanted to make is that this is a hospice. There are people that work here, people that need to take a break from everything that's going on within those walls. They can easily get on the sidewalk, get on the trail, go for a walk, their break, on their lunch breaks. Right now, they have to cross all of these trees, walk in an unpaved surface to get to the other side of the street or to get to the south side of the, of the trail. So that's why I will be in opposition of waiver to the, to the sidewalk.
Johnny, how do you feel about the overhead, the power pole?
I think that's something that we can compromise. You know, if, if we were to get the sidewalk and the street trees, I would not have an issue with the, the waiver of the overhead utilities.
Would you, I don't mean to be, you know, presumptuous, but since we have different points of view, would you be willing to make that a motion and then we could see where we find on that?
Well, let's take the vote, let's take the vote and if it gets denied...
Oh, do you have a motion?
Yeah, here's a motion.
There's a motion on the floor.
To accept, to, to recommend the waivers.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor from Rocky to recommend waiver on all three items, A, B, and C. If you are in favor of this motion, please raise your right hand. Okay. If you are not in favor of this motion, please raise your right hand. So nothing here. Motion fails. So now we need to come up with a new motion, coming up with a compromise here.
I will make a motion to... I will make a motion to waive part A and B and ask for them to support trees.
Oh, wait, so you want to waive part A and where it's part B and then recommend a staff on part C? Okay.
Would, would you repeat the motion, please?
Yep, so Carolyn is recommending waiver of part A, waiver of part B, and then recommending staff on part C. If you are in favor of this motion, please raise your right hand. If you are not in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you.
Do we get the, the four of those? Those that are opposed, please raise your hand.
Okay, motion carries and we will move on to item number six.
Can we not have another motion? There's one more option to... There's one more option, isn't there?
A motion was made and it was approved.
Oh, it was approved, alright, thank you.
Yes, yes, yeah, it was approved. So, A and, parts A and B were, the type 2 design alternatives were approved, part C was denied.
Thank you.
Okay, item number six, request from On Point Investments LLC represented by Mitch Colosi for review and approval of a public hearing site plan for type 2 design alternative in accordance with city code for property located at 2406 Woodland Avenue. Waiver of the requirement that a 2 household use may only occupy a structure that was constructed for 2 household units. Waiver of the requirement that allows no more than 25% of a front yard area to be covered. Waiver of the requirement to construct a minimum of 120 square foot storage shed for each household unit. Kyle will be presenting this item.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the commission. Again, Kyle Larson, member of City Planning Staff. This item is 2406 Woodland Avenue. Site map showing you the approximate location here along the south side of Woodland Avenue, just west of 24th Street and just southwest of the Woodland Cemetery. Site photos of the existing property. The property had been operated as a fourplex, had been vacant for a period of time and lost its grandfather rights. The property was rezoned earlier this summer to allow a duplex use. So, a duplex is allowed by the zoning district now, following that rezoning. This is the north side of the home from Woodland. You can see here, kind of this gravel driveway that spills that into the front yard that was going to be removed and a driveway will be paved here. You'll see that in a couple more slides when I show the site plan. There was a second driveway to the, I guess, west side of the property. This will be removed, this drive approach will be removed and the front yard will be restored to grass. I do want to point out that the two entry doors are, can kind of be made out here. It's my understanding, it's an upper level unit and a main floor unit in terms of the configuration of the property internally. And then a couple of streetscape views looking, this is to the west along Woodland Avenue to give you a little bit of, excuse me, to the east along Woodland Avenue to give you a little bit of context of the street. And then a view back to the west along Woodland Avenue. These are the elevations that have been provided by the applicant. There is an existing historic covered porch here. This 2D rendering, it's kind of hard to make out, but this, there is depth here, this is an open covered porch. It is a little bit deceiving, so I just wanted to point that out. A couple of the design elements that we have worked with the applicant on are to add a covered stoop here over these two doors, so you can kind of see this roof formation here, sketched on the facade. The pitch of that roof would match the pitch of the existing front porch. There would be a corner column, it's a little bit hard to make out here, but there would be a corner column that would kind of denote that and add some interest to that new covered stoop. I mentioned the two front doors, we are requesting that the two front doors have windows. And that the applicant restore the railing wall that is on that historic front porch. Those are some of the design elements of the front facade. Here's the site plan that was submitted by the applicant. We have suggested a few revisions to this as well. You can see that paved driveway on the east side being added here. And then we are suggesting that the applicant add a walkway off of that driveway, if you can follow my cursor here, to lead into that historic porch that can be used as kind of an outdoor seating area for the tenants of the two units. And then there would be the entry doors located here for the two units. And as I mentioned, that second drive approach would be removed, front yard would be restored to grass. Interior four floor plans, I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time on that, but if there are any questions for the applicant in terms of how it's oriented, the floor plans are here for you. As mentioned, there were three type 2 design alternatives that the applicant is seeking. The first one is to allow the duplex to operate in a, in a home that was originally constructed as a single-family dwelling. The second is the paving for that new driveway will put the applicant just over the allowed front yard impervious area, so that is another type 2 design alternative that they're seeking. Additionally, the code requires garage to be built. And a type 1 design alternative option is to install a shed for each of the two units. The applicant is not willing to do that, so they're seeking a type 2 design alternative in order to get around that shed requirement as well. Staff believes that the 2 household residential use is appropriate. The parcel is in proximity to a neighborhood node that is designated in Plan DSM. It's a block off of Ingersoll Avenue. It's, has reasonable walking distance to transit along Ingersoll Avenue. The dwelling was originally constructed as a single-family unit. As I mentioned, it had lost its grandfather rights to operate as a fourplex, so it's being, having a density reduction down to two units. Staff believes that the front yard impervious area is not, is appropriate and it's not out of character for the neighborhood. So staff is recommending approval for the, the use of the structure as a duplex. We're also recommending approval for the front yard impervious area. However, we are recommending denial on the relief from the shed requirement. We did receive a few comments from the Neighborhood Association as well as neighbors. They were in opposition to what the applicant is proposing here. The Neighborhood Association submitted a letter in opposition earlier this summer when the rezoning came forward. So they were in opposition to the rezoning, they are also in opposition to these type 2 design alternatives in terms of allowing a duplex to operate in the home as well as in opposition to the front yard impervious area. And they feel that shed should be required in order to provide the tenants with some storage area. I'm gonna give you some time to read through this, but that really concludes my presentation. If you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them now.
Can I clarify that there's, there's no door on the porch that we're requiring the walkway to?
That's correct. I'll go back to the front facade elevation, so you can kind of see that.
So the only way to the porch is on the outside? But I guess the second piece is, the, where are the sheds anticipated? Because I guess I'm not, I thought the backyard was really steep here, or is it not? Where would the sheds go?
The sheds aren't shown on the site plan. However, they would be located in the rear yard. There's really no specific location that they would have to be placed. They would just have to be a minimum of five feet off any of the side or rear property lines. And at least three feet away from the primary structure. So there's flexibility in terms of their placement in the rear yard.
Could you put that second le, letter up again? I wasn't done reading that, please.
Absolutely, yes. There is, yeah, there's another email. Oh, I'm sorry, there's another page and then there's one more email.
I noticed this letter is from June 4th.
Yes.
Has anything changed since then that would be, would have been a concern?
It's my understanding that the Neighborhood Association holds the same opinion that they did back in June. They oppose the rezoning to allow the duplex. And they also oppose the type 2 design alternatives in order to allow the duplex to operate in the home.
Alright, any questions? Thanks Kyle. I'll now ask the applicant to come up and present. You have 10 minutes, please state your name and address.
My name is Mitch Colusi, I live at 2421 High Street, which is adjacent to this property. I represent On Point Investments along with Colusi Construction, which will be doing the renovations. We own several properties in this neighborhood. We've owned and operated this facility for several years, I believe 2014 was acquisition date on this. We felt that the fourplex has always and consistently been out of character with the neighborhood. To support initiatives proposed by the city over the last year, including density, not the density piece so much, but as to the pass-through doorways, separation of HVAC systems, et cetera, inside of the code, we felt that a duplex was more appropriate for this neighborhood and still allowed us to operate somewhat feasibly on this project. The waivers that we're requesting, we've filtered as many of the requests from the neighborhood as possible to accommodate. So the expansion of the parking area, that puts us over the 25% threshold there. Is the support keeping less street parking available for this? I want to keep in mind, we were a fourplex, so at any given time there would be four vehicles parked there, or more, depending on occupancy load, which did spill over on the Woodland, the street itself. This was a busy street. With the density reduction, our hope is that there's three or less vehicles on-site. We've built the property to support that. It is a three-bedroom unit on both top and bottom now. But given location, given the transit lines, et cetera, we do feel that we can adequately park on-site with the extension of what's there. As far as the additional waiver to the type 2 garage piece, it's our hope that the commission will see, there is ample storage inside of these units. We are also providing about 600 square foot of storage in the basement area. We do provide lawn service, snow service, et cetera, so there is nothing required of tenants inside of this property to maintain the lawn. There's adequate storage for both bikes or any other objects that you might have, both in the basement, which is an exterior entrance to the property, as well as the front porch area if they so chose to put it there. I'd be more than willing to put a bike rack or anything else to accommodate bikes, although I wouldn't recommend storage outside given kind of the downtown issues that we've seen. So, I'm humbly requesting, staff is not supportive on the third piece, but requesting that they are supported for the other two. I know that's difficult for me to articulate, but I would be happy to answer any questions that might exist insofar as this project. Oh, one more thing that I do want to mention. The neighborhood was opposed to this expansion, they still are. We've come in front of this board once already to ask for permission to rezon this. We also were in front of city council and we were upheld and rezoned to support the duplex conversion from single-family zoning with the blanketing. So I understand that they're opposed to it. I humbly request that we look at the greater good as well as the density aspects of what this project offers. Are there any questions that I can answer?
I'm sorry, what's the square footage of the total property? I'm sorry.
That's a great question. I don't know offhand based on... It says 1276, I feel like that's light with the...
It's 2452.
Thank you.
And, I don't understand, so you've owned this, how long?
Since 2014.
So you have served as slash frog?
Yep, we also own slash frog, yes.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any speakers in the audience in support of this item? Do we have any speakers in opposition? Please state your name and address. You have five minutes.
Thank you, my name is Catherine Porter, I live at 821 30th Street. And I'm actually here representing the Woodland Heights organization. We do still oppose this property operating as a duplex. We feel like overall it is out of character with the neighborhood and goes against the goals of our city-recognized neighborhood plan to return to single-family dwellings whenever possible. In terms of the additional impervious surface, while we appreciate that we're, there's an attempt to provide off-street parking in a location where there's extremely limited on-street parking, we do not feel like it will provide enough space for the number of vehicles associated with 2, 3 bedroom units. Stacking of cars is something that we all know many people do not like to do, and we think it will create additional on-street parking at a location where we already have safety concerns due to the width of the street combined with the volume of traffic. So, we ask that you consider opposing the waivers and the city's staff recommendation. So, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers in the audience in opposition? Or neutral? Okay, any questions for staff at this point?
Has a TDM been done to, I guess, two pieces? Is there a TDM target for the number of car spaces per thousand square foot that should be expected for this type of house? And has a TDM been done to understand how many cars per thousand are in this neighborhood?
I think the answer to that question is no.
Is there a target for what we are wanting in this neighborhood or in this type of area? Or what we would expect, given local transit options? Because isn't there a bus stop like just next door to this thing too?
Yeah, I believe, you know, Woodland Avenue is a bus route. But I, I've lost track a little bit, was your question initially about parking standards? Or, I didn't catch it?
It's both, I mean, we're saying, we're saying that we expect to have way more than this number of cars that the driveway can support. Is that, is that a supportable assertion? Should we be expecting five cars in this driveway? Or are we thinking that two to three is actually an accurate estimate that should be in this driveway?
Well, we would, from a parking perspective, we need to rely on the parking standards in chapter 135, which would, you know, set the number of spaces that you have to provide per unit. Beyond that, that's, that's kind of what the city code sets for us. Kyle, do you know off the top of your head what the required minimum was? Is it, is it one per unit?
I believe it is.
Yeah, so they're, they're exceeding the city's minimum requirement if, if they're providing, you know, tandem stalls. But two would be required as a minimum. And then what was the rest of your, the transit question? Is that...
Okay, so only two is required, so there's no concern with the number of cars. The next is, do we know how many cars are usually in these? We have six bedrooms, do we know how many cars we expect for six bedrooms?
No, we, we wouldn't have any standard for that.
Yeah.
Can I clarify something? But this, at one point, this was a fourplex though.
Correct.
Right, so there was way, probably twice as many cars at some point than there would be now.
Yeah, and I think that that's a very valuable point that you're raising. I mean, the, the commission and the city council reviewed this, this whole circumstance not too long ago. I don't know Kyle, when it was in front of the commission, maybe this summer?
I think it was June.
So at that point, all our discussion, we focused on, at that point, does it make sense to have a duplex here? And the decision by the commission who recommended approval and the city council who approved it was yes, a duplex makes sense here. During those public hearings, it was obvious that applicant's intent was to leave this building here. It's a nuance of the code that requires the type 2 relief because it's, was not a built as, but I would argue that we all understood during the public hearing process, the rezoning process... process, that that was the intent and that we approved that intent.
So Jason, what you're saying is that we don't have any say with regards to if it's going to remain or stay as a duplex? Is that correct?
That, that's correct. The zoning is said, has been approved, allows a duplex. The weird, the nuance here of issuing a type 2 is, do you want them to tear this down and build a new duplex? Or do you want them to renovate this and keep it as a, you know, as a duplex? We're recommending approval that we just renovate the historic structure as a duplex.
Does the neighborhood understand that now?
I, I believe so. I think they're just fundamentally opposed to the whole concept and they're going to be opposed to it throughout the whole process.
Are there any other questions? If not, we can have the applicant up for rebuttal if there is anything else to say.
I appreciate staff pointing out and also the dialogue around this. I would be happy to pave the entirety of the front yard to get more parking here, but I think that's more out of character for the neighborhood. And I believe immediately adjacent neighbors would like us to get rid of the additional entrance to the parcel. I also think that's more in support of city code. So I would love to assist with additional parking, if that's the will of the committee. I don't think that that would gain approval from neighborhood either. As far as, again, towards the request for waiver, if this was a side-by-side duplex, I would be in strong support of sheds, that type of thing, if there wasn't additional storage available. I believe after talking with staff and going through that, the intent is storage for those sheds. And I think it adds an additional maintenance item to the property. It also diminishes the use of the rear yard further. I think we can solve that through the storage, et cetera, that's available on-site in the existing footprint. Thank you again.
Thank you. All right. At this point, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask commissioners what they think. Jan?
I just wanted to point out to the commissioner that if I'm correct, we've been pretty firm on sheds with Habitat for Humanity, and we've really been consistent on that. So I just wanted to remind people about that.
I think that's a good point.
I agree with that. I also think that maybe two sheds in one property, it's probably overkill. So I don't know if we can recommend one shed instead as part of our recommendation. Just a thought.
One shed for two families seems difficult, doesn't it? Because I wouldn't want to share my shed with someone I'm renting with in a duplex.
Well, some of the concerns in the letters were the garbage totes. So if we're placing the garbage totes in there for both units, you still have the storage in the basement that the applicant mentioned. I feel if we put two sheds, it's ultimately going to be up to the landlord, in this case, the applicant, to how that shed is used.
Right. And if the basement is being proposed as the use of storage, that again would presumably, I don't know the layout of it, but it would be a shared storage space. So by providing one shed, you're potentially providing a storage area for one unit and the basement as a storage area for another unit. I'm sure that's probably something he would have wanted to comment on.
And this is where maybe I'm just new and we're not understanding, because I guess I see, it sounds like there's precedent for requiring sheds. It also seems like the purpose of the sheds is also for like bikes and things. And if we're saying that we're cool with two cars per driveway, it assumes we're going to be using public transit, which seems like we would need more outdoor gear being stored than me wanting to drag something down my basement stairs, because I hate even getting my kids' bikes into the yard. So I don't even, like, taking that down the basement every day seems like that would be a pain. Am I misunderstanding?
I think that the applicant noted that there was an outdoor entrance to the basement. So I don't think it's taking it down the stairs from what I understand.
Correct. There are no stairs to the basement entrance.
Jan?
Well, and I just wanted to clarify, when I said habitat, those were not duplexes. Those were individual homes. I just wanted to clarify that.
I do think there could be some issues just from, you know, a landlord's point of view. If you're renting to two families and there's a family kind of taking over a shed and then some, I think that you could get into some, some trouble there, because there's no way to parcel that out.
You can provide separate entrances to the basement as well, so on the hallway, access from both sides for one unit and the other unit. At least 600 square foot per, which is by that plus the next to your shed.
Thank you. Jan?
I'll move staff.
Thank you, Jan. All in favor of Jan's proposal to move staff? Please raise your right hand. Anyone opposed? Please raise your hand. Abstentions? Thank you. Motion carries?
Yeah, that, yeah, not the sheds, but yeah, waiver the rest of it.
All right. We'll move on to item number seven. Request from Jose Chavez for review and approval of a public hearing site plan and a type 2 design alternative in accordance with city code for property located at 1420 East 16th Street to allow an attached carport to be construction within two feet of a northside lot. Kyle?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the commission, Kyle Larson, city planning staff. Final item on the agenda tonight is 1420 East 16th Street. Applicant is proposing to attach a carport over their driveway, which is within two feet of the northside lot line, where a seven-foot setback is required by code. A map of the subject property on the east side of East 16th, excuse me, the west side of East 16th Street. Subject property is the blue house on the left. The carport would extend over the driveway to provide cover parking for the applicant there. View looking to the north along East 16th Street. View looking to the south along East 16th Street. Again, a view to the south. This is the site plan provided by the applicant to give you a better idea of the attached carport on the north side of the house. That would extend almost the full length, depth of the house. And as I mentioned, they're seeking a relief of the side yard setback requirement, which per code is seven feet. They're proposing to place the attached carport within two feet of that northside property line. This is another drawing provided by the applicant showing the attached carport and how it would look from the front of the home. These are some structural drawings of the framing of the, the structure. Staff recommendation was provided in your report, to your packet. As I mentioned, the applicant is proposing to construct a carport over existing driveway along the north side of the property. The proposed 12-foot wide carport would be attached to the principal structure and within two feet of that northside property line. This is a 71.42 percent decrease from the required seven-foot setback. Staff believes the requested design alternative would not be in character with the surrounding area. Staff is not supportive of the request of waiver for reduced side yard setback, which is why we're request, recommending denial of the type 2 design alternative for the setback. We did not receive any comments from neighbors. That concludes the presentation. Are there any questions for me?
I think you answered my question, which was, what does his neighbor think?
We didn't hear anything from the neighbors, so...
Okay. Thank you.
Is the exact same type of carport still on the house at 417, directly across the street? I noticed there wasn't a southeast-facing view. 417 has a carport on the south side of it that actually looks pretty exactly like what's proposed, except that it's metal versus wood. So southeast, 417, down, over, yep, right there. That, oop, right there, you're on it. That's the carport right there.
Yes.
And it's exactly on the property line, too, right? So what makes that one different than this one?
I don't know when that was constructed, but it's entirely possible that it would have been constructed under the old zoning code, which the requirements could have been different. They also could have sought relief from the Board of Adjustment or Planning and Zoning Commission to have that addition located closer to the property line, too. I can't really speak to that, but that's likely how that...
It could, could also have been built without a permit, never been turned in, so...
Any further questions? Thanks, Kyle. The applicant can now present. You have 10 minutes. Please state your name and address.
Hello, I'm just the translator for Jose Chavez. The address is 1420 East 16th Street. So the reason we're is because we wanted to create a carport attached to our house just to create shade from the sun, because on the top of our cars, the paint is getting ruined, and we just wanted shade from that. And that's just why we were seeking a, just to get this approved and get this done with, so...
Thank you. Are there any questions from the commissioners?
I wondered if you knew what your neighbors would say about the carport?
Well, we did talk to our next-door neighbor, the owner of the White House. He didn't have any negative comments or anything like that to the project that we're considering making. Other than that, no other neighbors have made any comments or anything like that. Also, with creating this project, we're not going to be destroying anything on the other side of the property. We're just going to be creating this project in our property. We're not going to be constructing anything on the other side of the owner, the White House owner. And yeah, it's, nothing's going to be destroyed, it's just going to be strict on our property.
All right. Any other questions? Thank you. Do we have any speakers in the audience in support of this item? Do we have any speakers in opposition? Are you in opposition, ma'am? In, in favor? Do you want to come up to the podium, please, if you can? Can you state your name and address for us?
Yes, my name is Sharon Ratray. I live at 1413 East 16th Street, diagonally across from this neighbor. And I see no reason why he shouldn't build his carport. Yeah, I'm over this way. The neighbor to the north of me has a carport, which is right on our lot lines, and I've never had a problem with it. It hasn't caused any distractions to my property or anything. So I see no reason why he shouldn't be allowed to have it, unless, I do have a question. The city is planning on zoning our street commercial.
I don't... Can you speak to that?
I, what was the question, ma'am?
Is the city planning on zoning our street commercial, and is that why they might put an objection up on this?
No. The, no, there's no plans to zone anything commercial here. Hey, the staff analysis on this really has to do, does it impact the neighbor? That's the whole point of setbacks. We just felt that being two feet away from the property line might impact the neighbor to the north. That was the basis of our report. Has nothing to do with any other elements or plans or...
Okay, because I have heard from a few sources that you are planning on zoning a commercial, so I just wondered, since I live there.
Well, thank you for your support.
May I ask a question of Jason?
Of course. Yep.
You know, there is around the school up on, what's the school? Up by, by Hull Avenue? On the, on the east side of the freeway as it bends up to the north, there is a discussion that right now it's zoned, I think, light and industrial or some such. And there was some talk with the city to downzone that, as I remember. Could you address that? That might be what you're referring to.
Yeah, there are, this, her property is not even, not...
No, we're away from the area.
Oh, you're, you're familiar with that, then? Okay, thank you.
So that's, that's going to be, that's on the work program to look at a couple of those areas that you're, you're referring to, Will, but her property, this street, is not another.
Yep.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers in the audience tonight in support? Any in opposition or neutral? Any questions for staff? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and hear what the commissioners have to say. Or I'll go. I think that we should allow him to build his carport.
I was going to respectfully decline or deny staff.
Yes. Okay. So...
I'd like to voice the other side of the coin.
Okay.
If, if I were the neighbor to the, to the south, I guess, and the carport is almost on the property line, I'm thinking about rain and runoff, and I'm thinking about snow and runoff. And regardless of the property owner that is in that house now, that property owner isn't going to be there forever, and the carport's going to be there for quite a while. And if I were that neighbor, I wouldn't want to have to be dealing, frankly, with more water and more snow when it melts off the carport. And guess where it's going to go? It's going to go on my property, not their property.
Are we talking, we, we're talking about the house to the north, right? Isn't that what the carport would be along? And that's the one that they said they spoke with?
I, I believe that's correct. What's being, what Will is discussing is the property owner to the north. With the shared driveways, you can see in the map on the...
Gotcha.
Driveways in close proximity, it's not shared.
Does anyone else have any comments? Okay. There is a motion on the floor, so I will take a vote on the motion to deny staff and... I, I did. To deny staff and allow the carport to be built. All in favor? Please raise your right hand. All opposed? Please raise your hand. And any abstentions? All right. Motion carries. Are there any committee or director's reports?
No, I don't have anything to report this time. Thank you.
All right. We're adjourned. Or do I need that motion?
No, you can.
Okay.